Term rental. For C, ordinance amending the water and sewer rates. To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5L. Resolution requesting the assistance of Harrison County in grass mowing. Item 5M, resolution creating Kapple Project 1075, Pops Ferry Bridge Collision. To the routine agenda, we're adding a docket of claims in the amount of sixty-two thousand, sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six and four cents.
I moved agenda as amended.
Thank you, Michelle. I got a motion to accept the amended, the agenda as amended by George Lawrence, the second.
Second.
Second by Kenny Glavine. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, someone will raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. So bring us to the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor, your report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Before I forget, I'd like to ask to spread the expense credit card, travel expense credit card to the minutes. I usually do that last and I'll forget it. So, but I do want to welcome everyone to our council meeting today and our official member of the Wool Market Planning Commission is Mr. Bill Brodus. Good to have you here today. A longtime member of the Wool Market Planning Commission that meets regularly on at the Chevron Station, 7:30 a.m. Anyway, we're welcoming him there. Again, COVID is, I think we had seventy-six new cases today in Harrison County, seventeen, almost seventeen hundred deaths, and it's touching every one of us, you know, and we wish everyone to stay healthy and stay masked up and do the things that we need to do to hopefully conquer this in the next few months. It's a, it's a something that's on everyone's mind now, and we will encourage everyone to do their part to, to do this, to get this the right way. Along those lines, I think with an executive order with regard to a little bit stiffening of the bar closure or the service of whiskey at bars after 11:00 p.m. So that's the purpose of this executive order that we're going to implement. We've already, you know, done some things to give these folks notification that the intent is not to serve this stuff, not to play games with regard to the service of alcohol or serving of alcohol. And I think that's along the lines of what we need to do as a city and as a tourist destination and just the right thing to do for citizens of Biloxi and people who will be citizens of Biloxi. So that's the intent of what we're going to do as far as the executive order that's on the agenda. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That'll bring us to council reports, and before we start, I'd like to acknowledge that Councilman Guines is not here. The past couple of weeks, he discussed family members of his contracting COVID-19. He has now been tested positive, so he is in my family's thoughts and prayers. I hope he will be in yours as well. He also requested that I remind everyone that there will be a drive-through testing, a drive-through testing clinic at the Biloxi Civic Center from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on, it's Wednesday tomorrow morning. So, Mr. Tisdale, your report?
No report, thank you.
He has no report.
No report.
Councilman Lawrence?
Couple of questions to the mayor. I know we've talked about this a few different times, and you said to make sure y'all don't forget it. You talked about putting two-hour parking on Howard Avenue.
Yep.
Are you in plans to do that still?
Yeah, we are, we are. I think the final throws with regard to the parking lot behind there, so I think our final paving, we're going to do any more paving in the parking lot north of the Sanger.
Just the one little strip while they're working. Once they're done working, that one little area that Black Lines actually got bricks and equipment, we'll fix that up.
Right. It's our intent to do. As soon as all is wrapped up, we'll go two-hour parking on Howard Avenue.
Two-hour parking signs have been made, and Public Works came to see me earlier this week to find out exactly where to put them. So if they haven't been put up yet, they will be shortly.
And now going back to the bars, you said the bars itself has to be shut down at 11:00 to bill them?
Not shut down the building, but service of alcohol, distribution of alcohol, or serving of alcohol. So there's been some games being played by a lot of bars with wristbands and, you know, cover charges and so forth that would carry them over the intent of shutting service down at 11:00 in the bars, where people nose to nose and some of the, it's my personal opinion that, that the practice of masking and social distancing is not, you know, happening there. And I think the intent, and I'll ask Peter to, you know, I don't think it's on the agenda, but it's an executive order that we'll be implementing very shortly. So that, I think that's what should be done.
What I'm saying though, is if they stay open at 11:00, they can serve food, but they can't serve alcohol?
They can't serve alcohol.
Or they gotta shut down completely.
They can't serve alcohol, period, after 11:00.
The governor's order stated after 11:00, they will not sell alcohol. So you had some, a lot of bars did close and stop selling and serving at 11:00. A few got creative and started doing drink tickets, wristbands, and did not shut down, and we've become aware of that. So this is to clarify and say after 11:00, you shouldn't sell, you shouldn't serve, you shouldn't distribute. So all we're doing is trying to enforce what the governor's got in place.
It shouldn't be at the bar, I mean, you know, at tables. I think the whole intent of the, of the executive order that the government made, if you have a drink at your table, you know, after 11:00 that you purchased before 11:00, then, you know, finish it and go from there.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Barrett?
Yes, I have, I have a few things. Chief Miller, and it may be related to the accident that happened this week, but since I've been back in town, I've gotten multiple messages about speeding, and it's like Shorecrest, Pin Oak, Wool Market Road, and is the main three roads that they hit me on. So if we can just, you know, maybe do a little bit extra patrol and a radar out there just to slow those guys down. And then on Pin Oak, we used to have a sign that would give the speed limit whenever people would come through there, and that's, that's gone. I don't know if that's been moved to another location or something.
No, it broke. We've got a couple of orders. As soon as one gets in, we'll get it up there.
Okay, I know that that, you know, I live in there, and I know that that helped. People would come around that curve and they would see it, and it would, you know, cause them to slow down, so that, that helped. And then, as most people probably know, we had an accident on Wool Market Road, I think maybe Saturday or Sunday. Man was riding a bike and got hit. And in this particular instance, it may not have helped, but, you know, we're continuing to grow, and there's people on those streets all the time. And I know that we have that sidewalk grant with MDOT, and if there's anything that we can do to push that, or you just tell me who I need to talk to, and, you know, to try to, to try to get that funding to us. I know that we have our 20% from the bond money, and so whatever I, you know, I'll do whatever I have to do if you just point me in the right direction.
We actually have that project being designed right now. We've finally gotten through all of the MDOT approving the contracts and all that. The funding is in place. It won't be available until 2021 to spend, so, but that shouldn't be an issue. Usually they let us spend it early if they have, you know, they have some extra money that they can, we can kind of finagle that with MDOT. So really, I, I hope that we have that project out to bid before the end of the year. That's the goal. It's moving forward.
Yeah, we just, you know, the more we grow, the more and more people are out, you know, on bikes, walking, jogging and stuff, and
Absolutely.
I've always said it's just a matter of time, and like I said, it may not have made a difference in this particular instance, but, you know, we want to do everything we can to prevent stuff like that from happening. And then
Bata, will you stay there? Thank you.
Mike, on Jim Burden Road, did we ever make contact with the county on that striping? Follow up on that, on the striping of Jim Burden?
I didn't, I haven't talked to him since we last talked. I'll, I'll do it tonight.
Okay. I know I reached
What the holdup is, they've, they've done, since they finished Jim Burden Road, they've done Snug Harbor, they've done some other work for us, so, I mean, their crews are available. I'm not sure why they haven't striped yet.
Well, the reason Jim Burden hasn't been striped is because of the mailboxes. We have
So that's a county call.
It's, it's something called a prescription road where we don't have any easement or something beyond the edge of the road. Is that correct, Jerry? And so we don't have the right to go move a mailbox or whatever it's?
Yeah, and there's, there's federal laws against us touching a mailbox. We can't move it. Either the homeowner has to move it, or the mail, the postal service has to move it.
But even if we could just, until we can figure that out, if we can get the middle of the road striped, I mean, it's been, you know, there's no streetlights really on that road, and at night, it's, it's really dark, and, you know, you can't see where you are on the road really well. So if we could at least get the middle of it striped. And then, Christie, have we made any progress on the, the parking with the county at the community center?
Yes, I heard back from the county engineer yesterday, and they're supposed to start before the end of this week.
Okay, so we did come up with some kind of resolution on the grade or whatever?
Came up with a solution, yes, and they're, they're going to get started.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, I got a few things. First and foremost, Councilman Guines is in all of our prayers and his family. You know, this COVID-19 is starting to hit home, and it's starting to affect more and more people as we see that, but, you know, we're, we're going to continue to battle it, and every day we, I'm sure we're going to get closer to get on the other side of this thing. I also want to recognize a Biloxi police officer. I woke up this morning and a picture appeared on my social media on Officer Raddix. I don't know if anybody saw it. It should be on the national news everywhere, and it's a very compelling picture of him bending over assisting a veteran that had collapsed, and he was waiting for the ambulance to get there to provide some assistance. And he is to be commended, Mayor. I hope there's something, you know, some recognition for, for Officer Raddix. And I sent him a note, and he acknowledged it, and it was a great, great way to start the day today with, with something like that. The other thing, I listened to the governor's press conference today, and we were wondering what was going to happen with the schools, and he decided, you know, there were several counties that are going to be, I think, grade seven, seven on up. He decided some counties are, he's going to do the remote schooling or the virtual schooling and delay, delay it. He left Harrison County alone, but tomorrow, kids go back to school, the teachers are, they're there on, you know, doing their thing, and they're to be commended for their bravery and their commitment to getting our kids educated and in an environment that is safe and sanitary and under the utmost stressful conditions. We really need to show love for our, our teachers as well. I'm also being asked to be an ambassador for Real Men Wear Pink, and it's a cancer awareness program. I want to personally thank some individuals today. Peter, I want to thank you in advance. I know you're trying to get to the site and do something. Mike Leonard, thank you for your hard hat, your pink hard hat, and showing the love to so many people. It's so inspiring. I can't tell you how many people, not only do I hear from on social media, but I get texts and calls of, of what y'all are doing, not what I'm doing. First lady, Serena Gillich, want to thank her for doing a little bit, and, you know, she's a marvelous lady, and, and, you know, I'm not surprised. She was one of the first ones that stepped up to the plate for that. Walt Rhodey, he also made a contribution, and we'll be doing things throughout October. If I missed anybody, I'm sorry. Did I miss Keith? Did I miss you? Okay. You ready, huh? Okay. So we'll be doing some fun things, Mayor. Maybe we can light that lighthouse pink in October or something like that and, and have a little bit of fun with it. My goal initially was, I don't know, $1,200, $2,000, and the account's up over $7,000. And the contributions from the Gulf Coast just from my campaign are, I think I'm sixth as of this morning nationally in raising funds. Kevin Felcher is up there around fourth, by the way, and as we kind of help this great, great cause. All right, moving back, some city business, just like to get an update if I can, Christie, on drainage at Waters View.
As you know, just a quick run, run overview, overview for the rest of the councilmen. We, Councilman Glavine had asked me to get a permit to clean out some drainage that it's, it's kind of a natural drainage way, a bayou, not really, leads to a bayou, it's very marshy. Asked me to get a permit for that to be cleaned out, and it's got a lot of downed trees, a lot of just debris in general in it. So we went to the Corps of Engineers and DMR and got permits for that, and I believe you talked to the county. The county said they would assist. So where we sit on that now is we have the permit in place. We've met with the county out there, and they have requested assistance from the city of Biloxi because it is unfortunately labor-intensive work, and all has to be done by hand because it's in the marsh grass. And I think we're just waiting for Public Works to get with the county and kind of coordinate when that's going to happen.
Okay. You know, I'd just like to nudge that along, Mayor, Mike, if y'all could get with Public Works. I mean, it was a, I mean, it was really a major thing to get the permit. It was really questionable, could we get a permit? And we did. We got a permit for this ditch, and it is a major ditch, and it's filled in with a bunch of stuff over the years, going all the way back to Katrina, trees falling in it and everything, and that's what's damming it up. And if we can clear that out of here, I think it helps a lot along Brazier Road and then not just Waters View, but along Brazier as well, that, that have, have issues. So I just, just would request that we can nudge that along, or if we need to go back to the county or somebody, you know, please let me know, because, you know, I think that's a worthwhile project. Okay? And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine.
Not to make, not to make excuses for Public Works, but 10% of their workforce is vacant right now. That's, that's across the board in a lot of our departments.
Understood.
Christie, you mentioned the sidewalks. Where are we at on, on the sidewalk project for my ward? Right there on the Sun Kiss Pops Ferry Corner?
Yes, so we're working on getting the cost estimate pulled together for that. We have not done it yet. With a lot of this rain, we've been dealing with a lot of the drainage issues in the last two weeks, which also relates to that sidewalk. And we've got, the person, Robert does those, the sidewalk work as well, and he's been trying to coordinate the paving issues, which, the paving that we're doing in your ward, which as you know, has also been a little bit of an issue. So we don't have those costs pulled together yet, but I will get those to you by the end of the, by the end of this week, I'll have those together.
I, I received a call as I was coming in today from someone in the ward, and they mentioned the final surface. Had they begun the emulsion and the final surface layer?
They were supposed to today, and they did not show up. So Robert was trying to get in touch with them this afternoon and figure out what was going on. He coordinated with them yesterday, said they were going to be here. I don't know if something happened, maybe they had equipment issues, I'm not sure. But we'll find out why they were not able to make it today. They're supposed to do it today and tomorrow was the original schedule.
We have a good window of weather right now.
I know, I know. Trying to get as much done as we can.
Last thing, any, any update on the underwater vegetation in the boat shed?
No, I don't. And I need to get some more engineer, engineering in here to come in here and give y'all an update on that, because they, they know a lot more about that than I do, and I'll try to schedule that for the next meeting, just for them to come in and give y'all an update.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have an item with, referring to the, the accident?
Yeah. And what work is going on?
Yeah.
Grab the mic. Mike?
I was, I was saying that while we're on Ward Four, maybe that she could update you on what's happened since the accident at the Pops Ferry Bridge and what's planned. I think it's of great public interest.
Yeah. So we have had the, the company, the controlling, the company that writes the software that controls the bridge, had to come in and reset the software because the bridge, when, when the barge hit it, it, it jolted the spans a little bit because they were up. So we had them come in and rewrite the software so the bridge now seats like it's supposed to. We are having next week, they're supposed to come, a different company is going to come in and adjust the lock system, because the locks are, are a little off still, and so it will, so that they're snug in there, so it doesn't rattle when cars drive across it. Once we get those two things done, all the span repairs will be finished. The, we had divers in the water, I believe, this morning, it was either yesterday morning or this morning, we had divers in the water looking at the entire fender system, because when it hit, it, it hit, and then like three days later, there was still stuff floating away. So we put divers back in the water to see what the damage, how far back the damage was on the fender system. I expect to hear something from them in the next few days. We are getting quotes to go ahead and replace that fender system that was broke. We just needed to know how many, how many piles back that need to be fixed. I don't know, I guess, hopefully the end of this week, I'll get a report from the divers. That's the same company that's given us the quote to fix them, so we'll, we'll know those costs here in the next two weeks, maybe.
So the bridge is open to public, for passenger traffic, all but two hours a day, and then those two hours a day?
Well, they've got it. The bridge kind of, originally we were restricting marine traffic going through the bridge because the bridge, it took us crowbars to get the bridge open and closed. The bridge has since, not a very engineering term, technical term, but it like settled back in place some over time, and so now they don't have to have the crowbar. So we are opening, we're allowing marine traffic to go back and forth through it like normal, because we don't have to have the extra mechanics out there to help get it up and down, so.
But there's no structural integrity issues that any of our
No.
people should be worried about?
Nope, we, nope, we had a bridge inspector come and inspect the bridge that day before we opened it back up, and we actually sent water, divers in the water that day to look at the structural component of the bridge, to make sure there was no damage underwater before we allowed traffic back on it. And we have all those reports that we've gotten that are, if anybody wants to see them.
Okay, I think we're going to discuss, or I'm going to discuss more of this on 5M, so I'll reserve any more questions for that period.
Okay.
I have nothing further. Mr. Mike, was that all you had on? Thank you, sir. We'll take this to public comments. We've got 45 minutes allotted, three minutes per person. I'll start with the left-hand side of the room. If you would, come up to the microphone, state your name, and your address, and sign in for me. You have three minutes per person.
So, Mr. Mayor, City Council, department heads and fellow citizens, I'm here to say thank you. First of all, thank you to the PR staff. Because of this wonderful city and the message that's been clear across this Gulf Coast and across the state, I was able to have an event this Saturday at the Crox Center involving young people. We had an ROTC student that was the PPE team. They kept social distance very nicely. We taught them how to just start conversations and move people six feet at a time. Everybody had masks, everybody had lots of disinfectant. But because of the clear-cut message that our mayor continues to put out via the public relations team, there's no confusion about coming to Biloxi. I had two schools from Wes Harrison and also from St. Martin High School. We had gentlemen competing in a best dress contest, a speed mentoring, and we also shot free throws for charity. We were able to give away nearly $2,000 to area youth groups, five of them. And, and because the clear-cut message that this council and this mayor and the PR staff, to be quite frankly, I was here when this was proposed, and I remember the grimaces about the cost of it, but this is worth its weight in gold. And I just got to tell you, I mean, when I picked this up, it should be a cost associated with it. It is that kind of quality, glossy, it's thick, it talks about heroes of mine that lived in this city before, and please keep up the good work. I also want to thank the individuals on the clock for the city, the people that cut the grass, the weed eaters, the people that greet people at these, in these buildings. They are absolutely heroes, and I would like to hear their names a little bit more, because I know you got a lot of fish to fry, but let's not forget about the minnows. And again, thank you. I am president of YOGA of Coast, Youth Organizations of the Gulf Coast. What we do, we identify young people that can't afford to use your facilities along the Gulf Coast, and we help them with their fees. We help them with their tennis shoes. My fight for a free gymnasium is over. We will never get four free gymnasiums like I had growing up in the seventies and eighties. That's unfortunate, but it's the truth. So what we're trying to do is get those costs or those people, those kids that can't go to the Snyder Center from Ward Two, we're trying to get that transportation for them and get them paid. But thank you so much for the city of Biloxi shining like that lighthouse down there was built in the late 1800s. It continues to shine, and I really, really appreciate the city for doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Do you have anybody else on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side? Is there anybody on the left-hand side of the room, my right-hand side? If you would, please come to the, come forward, state your name and your address, and sign in for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you.
It's getting close to our anniversary here. Twenty-fourth of this month, we will have been annexed into Biloxi 21 years. That's usually when I come, but I had to come down a little early this time because I got something on my mind. I watched a beautiful thing today, and yesterday, and some the day before. They're doing a draining project out in my area, out in the Wool Market area, those that don't know. If you're familiar with Old Highway 67, we've had a drainage problem. We've been talking about it for 20 years probably, our drainage problem out there. Now we got developments going everywhere, and the drainage becomes a bigger problem all the time. Well, today is the first time I really saw something worthwhile. They're laying covets from in the Wool Market Road going southeast toward Howard Creek, where it will drain into. These covets are huge, they're twin covets, there's two of them. They, I don't know, they're 48 or 50-some inches. You could drive my lawnmower through them almost. But I wanted to get something on the record, the reason I came. They're, they're starting in the middle with this project, with the tower, and both ends of it are open. The open end to the east is just past what is Hattie K Drive, and then it opens up into an open ditch. I mean, a huge ditch, if any of you is familiar with it. The water pressure when it comes through those smaller pipes, it's going to come through there with a force when it rains, and I hope it don't happen. But if it does, I'm quite sure it's going to blow out my driveway and covets, which I put in years ago. I've got twin covets in mine. I've probably got the biggest ones on the road up until they put these in. And I'm telling you now, I don't want to come back in and say, "I told you so." Because I, I think, I don't know why we can't stretch these phases out and go all the way to the creek with it where it's supposed to be. Another thing, when that water gets down near the creek, it's going to take a shortcut across the corner of my property. It did it once before years ago, and the county fixed it. It goes straight into the creek now, but if you get more of a volume of water with much more pressure, it's going to blow it out again. Plutched already with all the new development, we got more and more sediment going down into the creek, into Cedar Lake, and I can show anybody that's interested where it's filling in, more so this year than I've ever seen in my life, and I've been here a long time. It's actually filling in the edge of Cedar Lake. Sediment from development, of course, we've got to have development, but we need to take care of the drainage first. We got, we're out of sync. We're not doing, we're building developments and roads and not taking care of the drainage. Same old story, I've told it a million times, but I'm so glad to see something done. And I watched a crew work today as good as I've seen in a long time. They do a wonderful job. And I must say, the sound system is, as they say on survey, it's somewhat better. You're doing good. Other than that, that's about all I got to say, but I do hope we can take that drainage all the way to where it's supposed to go. I never in my life started a ditch in the middle. And I've dug a few, too.
Mr. Brodus, it's good to see you again. Where you been?
Well, thank you. I'm glad I was able to get here.
We'll see you Thursday morning.
You bet.
Is there anybody else on my right-hand side of the room, your left? Is there anybody in the back of the room that would care to speak? There being none, we'll move on to policy agenda. Ordinance A.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to short-term rental and timeshare uses.
I'll make that motion.
All right, a motion by Paul Tisdale and a second by George Lawrence. This is a first reading, so we'll move to ordinance B.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinance pertaining to garbage collection fees.
Thank you, this was first moved by Team Tisdale-Lawrence. Mr. Tisdale?
Um, yes, what's driving the increase? Do we know or why is it going up a little less than a dollar?
It's the cost of the contract and the, the cost of the contract is driven by the cost of refuse disposal that's going up. So the, you know, every, every, every can that goes in a truck and the truck goes to the landfill and the landfill is charging more for disposal. So that's running the cost up per can.
Right, and I'm assuming that's an obligation, that's obligated under the contract.
Contractual obligation so long as we're in this contract.
Picking up more stuff, hauling it to where it's gotta go, costs them money, it's a pass-through cost to this city. We're not making anything off of this, just costs more to move that trash and garbage, so.
As you, as you know, because we've talked, sir, we're, we're not only not making any money, we're actually losing money.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah, um, this price is going to fifteen seventy-seven? Is it really, we come with fifteen seventy-seven, why, how come we just can't amend this and make it sixteen dollars? And that way, that we have a couple of years, we can play with this price. If you're gonna move it one, just let's move it, let's move it to sixteen, make it an easy number. Everybody sees it pretty easy on their water report, just make it sixteen dollars. I'd like to make that, if we have to amend that, I'd like to do that, just get it to sixteen even.
You would need to make a formal motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Lo, Mr. Lawrence has a motion on the floor to amend the dollar value in ordinance B from fifteen seventy-seven to sixteen dollars. Is there a second? There being none, the motion dies for like a second.
All right.
Mr. Lawrence, does that conclude your discussion?
That's it on that one.
Councilman Glavine, discussion?
So, so what happens if we don't approve this? What happens?
Yeah, we, we'll, the city will pay fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents and the employee, the residents will be paying fourteen dollars and eighty cents, so we'll be losing a dollar, ninety-seven cents per can per month, time fourteen thousand cans.
And, you know, again, by the, the way the enterprise fund's set up, you, you, you can't, you know, it's gotta hold its own, it won't be holding its own unless, less than what's paying out.
And, and you'll recall Gulfport got a little, uh, interested in getting out of the contract? And, um, all the cities sued and it cost them, um, a million and a half dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Million and a half dollars, they had to pay back to the.
Seven hundred thousand dollars possibly.
Seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars across the board. They had to, they had to pay to the, all the other cities because our ra, our rates went up when they got out. So, so us getting out of that contract and giving our, getting our own contract is possible, but it would be very expensive.
So, so let me follow this a little bit. So the, the garbage disposal company came to us and negotiated saying that this is our cost, so this is gonna be what the new contract is gonna be for this year or period?
For the next year.
And so then we, now it's in our hands and in order to pay it, we have to collect the extra X amount of cents from our citizens that have garbage or that, that are.
Solid waste.
Solid waste. And if not, they're gonna pay the fourteen something and the difference we gotta make up in the general fund or, or from what source?
General, general fund. So.
So there is no negotiation, this is the contract?
It's a contractual obligation unless we wanna get out of the contract and that would be what, much more expensive.
Okay. But all the negotiating is over with?
We're still, we're still paying less than, uh, a lot of cities are for garbage.
No, I understand that, but all the negotiating is over with, they're saying this is what it is, you gotta pay it.
Right, we, uh, understand.
This is what we assessed, this is what it's, we think it's gonna cost us and you're gonna pay it.
We have a contract with A, A, Harrison County Utility Authority. The Utility Authority has the contract with Waste Management and Pelican Waste. So the, the contract is between us and kind, what we're talking about is our contractual obligation to the HCUA to pay whatever our, our fair share is.
But again, there is no negotiating, this is what they're saying, this is the bill, and then we gotta figure out how to.
Yeah.
Pay it and unfortunately it's gone up.
Well, the last time we talked about, uh, what we could do at the Utility Authority, uh, we went from two times a week to one time a week. We had additionally put the recycle situation, I mean, it was a, a, a pretty good deal. We, we minimized the amount that we would, uh, we would go forward. If we, if we'd have kept, uh, uh, two times a week, I think it would probably have been around seventeen dollars.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, we made some, some, uh, some good faith efforts to get as much, uh, as we could bang for the buck out of that. And I think, you know, that's a, a price that, uh, has been negotiated and I think it'd probably go up again next year too, so.
And that's what I worry about, Mayor, I worry about they know that if they give us turnover something and say, hey, this is the price and they, they kinda have a blank check.
Well, it's a three-year kind of deal, so they've gotta step up. So, I mean, this is a, it was, it was a programmed thing back when we did the, the contract, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, um, in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, we went into a new contract, HCUA, with Waste Management for trash and then with Pelican Waste for.
Debris.
Debris.
And it was competitively bid.
So what, what's driving this cost up? Because there's, is it the, the cost to dump the trash?
To dispose, yeah, to, to put the stuff to.
And so the, so the contract, when we originally signed this contract, it has a fluctuating rate based upon what?
It's gonna step up, yeah.
Per charge to dump garbage?
No, it just, it just with, what they, I think it's a three-step, uh, contract is, I'm not sure how many years it's finished.
The contract is between HCUA and Waste Management, not, we're not a party to the contract. We're a party to the agreement with HCUA to pay our share based on can count.
Okay, my question is though, we went into this contract two or three years ago.
The, the Harrison County Utility Authority Board.
Say that again?
Approved that, the Harrison County Utility Authority.
Correct, yes, yeah. When I say we, HCUA went into this contract, which we're a part of, but that was two or three years ago, so that contract allowed for the rate that they charged us per can to change?
It does. You want me to bring, I, I, I don't have a copy of the contract here.
So that's based upon what, how much the landfill charges to dump the garbage?
It's the land, it's the landfill cost that's driving, that's driving the, driving the cost up. I mean, there's a, the cost, I, 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 I am not prepared to explain to you exactly the details of that contract today. I, I'd have to bring it back.
Okay.
But we are, I mean, we're locked in. That, that, that's the cost HCUA will be charging us.
Okay.
So it's a, that, that amount times eight, fourteen thousand.
Yes, I've just never seen a contract that allowed.
Escalation.
Yeah.
It allows escalation.
I mean, I thought, because originally we were charging thirteen something per can and we upped it to fourteen something.
But we were actually thirty cents.
Because we were charging less than ever. And at that point.
We were under billing in.
There was no, did we not know that it was, that they were gonna start, that there was the possibility of them charging us more?
I mean, that, that in their contract with the Utility Authority, that it, it's like, you know, it's, uh, rates can be changed at a, at an annual basis and that's what, what they're doing.
Okay.
So they can come back next year and say it's six dollars, they can go do a six-dollar increase and say that's what it is.
They have to justify that, they have to justify their cost to HCUA.
Yeah. I mean, the tonnage and, and, you know, the number of trips and that sort of thing is calculated and, and, you know.
But the, the number of trips wouldn't change because this is a once-a-week pickup, so it's whatever you can fit into this can.
To, to the dump is what, you know, what we're trying to calculate.
But with the once-a-week pickup, these cans are full, so they're no fuller than they were a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
They're taking the same amount of trash, so the only exclamation, explanation could be that the landfill is charging more per pound or per ton or whatever it is that they charge to dump there.
And, and they don't own the landfill, the, the other folks own the landfill, Waste Pro.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not Utility Authority landfill.
No, that's what's, Waste Management, right.
Well, there, there were some, there are some contracts that have, plenty of them have adjustable rates, especially in the early, what, two thousand and seven, adjustable rate mortgages were part of the problem that sent us into a, a financial crisis. And I'm the only one, I, I may have been one of the only ones that voted against this when it came up, when we lost service, the amount of service to our residents and increased the cost to our residents. And, um, at that time, looking at the ability for them to increase cost down the road, and we talked about increasing costs down the road to maintain this, um, enterprise fund, but I was against it at that point. Um, I know that the threat of, of cost that, you know, with the actions that Gulfport took, but I'm still against this. Is there any other discussion?
I, I just, I mean, we're in the middle of this COVID thing, there's, there's folks that are struggling economically and now we're going to add, we're gonna make a decision. I know we're gonna bear the burden either way, but, you know, I, it, I, I don't, I don't like giving somebody a blank check every year to be able to say we're gonna go up this amount. And, and, and I don't know the process of the board and how they, what, what formula they're looking at to make sure that it's reasonable.
Let, let me say, it's being part of the Utility Authority, at the time, we were negotiating apples and oranges and this was the best solution based on the, you know, the steps.
I remember.
And the escalation. The other, and yet we were still, even with that and not going to two times a week and staying away and, and doing those other things, you know, we were still thirty cents or so. The, the user was paying thirty cents, uh, uh, less than what we were, uh, being charged from Utility Authority, okay? It's still the best bang around, okay, when you took a, look at the whole package. You know, it's a, a big part of, of the bill that the end user pays is, of course, the, uh, is the debt service. So we're looking at all of those kinds of things. We talked a little bit about, uh, the possibility of doing some, you know, we refinanced, uh, what, eighteen million dollars and we saved about one point five million? Well, you and I, the city of Biloxi owns forty-two million dollars of that eighty-nine million dollar debt. It's all part of the things we're looking at. So, uh, you know, the bottom line is it, it's costing the city of Biloxi fifteen seventy-seven. We're asking the, you know, the users to at least absorb that, like we're, we're absorbing, we can't, you know, there's only so much, you know, in, in a five-pound bag and, uh, that's what we're asking to do.
How, how long is this contract?
Another year.
Four years, I think, sir.
So we're in year three or?
I think so.
Year three.
Yeah.
Okay. It was competitively bid, there were multiple bidders, this was the best value that was awarded, it had escalation built into it and.
We took a lot of heat by, by going to one, but I'm telling you, uh, uh, the only one city that left it at, at two times, it was Gulfport and, uh.
Does the escalation have a cap or is it, it is whatever we calculate and we come back next year and say this is what the escalation is? I'm just asking.
I'm not sure what the final year will be, but we can, we can get that information.
That's okay, I just wondered if there was some kind of ceiling that they couldn't exceed.
Call for the question. Ms. Newman?
Go ahead, Ms. Newman.
I look at it as a business standpoint, so when cost goes up, I understand cost goes up. However, you also have to look at the service that you're getting and all we do is get complaints of the garbage pickup and not saying that they're not doing their job. And I know with COVID and then everyone was renovating their homes and that might've set things back as well, but what I'm talking about is perception. And if we up the price, then we have no comeback to say to the citizens, well, this, you know, we're getting great service, so, you know, you have, you know, it is what it is. But when you're not, when the, when the residents are complaining of the service, then you up the price, then you have no explanation.
Let me say, let, let, no, let me say, this is not debris. Debris, like, record amounts of debris have been picked, picked up since March. That's the, you know, the Pelican Waste. This is garbage. This is, you know, the, the, uh, uh, the, the cans that are automated and picked up as well as the recycling. So, you know, we've done, that contract with regard to recycling is gonna save us in, in the long haul, people do the recycling. Garbage and debris, most of the complaints that in recent times were related to, you know, debris removal and people remodeling and limbs in future storms and so forth. There were extraordinary amounts of, of debris picked up by Pelican Waste. This is just, uh, garbage, as Mike was, had mentioned, uh.
Pelican Waste was in this room not two months ago making a presentation and they got laudatory comments from everybody about how well they were doing. Each of these contractors, both Pelican and Waste Management, pays a fine anytime they miss, anytime they miss a pickup, they have to pay, it's a hundred dollar fine every time for a missed can. So, I mean, if, uh, uh, with respect, I, I, I think this, they were doing a remarkably better job than the last contractor we had, which was terrible.
Where does that fine go to? Who do they pay the fine to?
Utility Authority.
Us?
Utility Authority.
Utility Authority, okay.
Uh, and again, they have RFID's on these tags, you know, they supposedly know who's picked up and they, they do a pretty good job on, on, on films and, and, uh, things that they do in each one of these trucks.
But I know they're not perfect, Dixie, I know they're not perfect.
And I'm not saying they're not doing their job, I'm talking about perception and most of our complaints are about garbage pickup, let's be honest.
Garbage or debris.
Yeah.
Debris.
Yeah.
Both.
We've tried to do a better job.
But I contact them every time and they always get right on it, but what I'm saying is the residents contact me complaining about it, so it's hard perception-wise to say, hey, we're going up on the garbage fees too, so even though your garbage isn't getting picked up, you know? I'm not saying they're not doing their job, I'm talking about perception.
Well, even with this adjustment, I still, we're probably twenty percent lower than everybody else.
I know it's lower than Ocean Springs paying with Waste Man, Waste Pro.
That's a great thing, to our residents, you know? Anyway.
Councilman Tisdale?
Yeah, just a couple of observations. The previous contractor before this latest contract that we're now under, I, I think you may recall the last nine months, it was, we were all miserable, we were all getting calls, as I recall. Uh, shoot, I don't even know if they had enough employees to limp through the end of the, the fiscal year.
Right, it was, right.
To, uh, complete their obligations. Um, the Utility Authority, as it was explained, we had signed agreement with the Utility Authority. They get the, they worked the best deal through the bid process. Um, Nathan, the only, the only thought that comes to mind is folks may be getting it, uh, getting more effective at putting more stuff in garbage carts is, is all I can tell you and that may account, I'm thinking, that may account for the increase in the, the waste of the garbage that's taken out to the landfill. I'm assuming that's measured by weight, not by the cart, it's by weight.
Right, by weight, yeah.
So if we have more, if we have more recycling, maybe you, if you take that out of your garbage can, a lot of people did, that leaves more room for whatever you wanna shove in there. And sometimes I suspect there may be small TVs, bricks, whatever you don't, whatever you wanna get off your property, just dump it in the garbage can, as long as it's less than, I don't know, two hundred and twenty pounds in the cart, they'll, they'll dump it out there. But, um, my point in all of this is, uh, when this garbage contract comes up again, as it did last time, it may be that you don't approve the agreement. And if that's the case, I, I don't know what option we have. Somebody's gotta come pick up the garbage at your curb. Maybe we can, uh, work, work a better deal individually, I don't know how that would be possible, but maybe it is. But, uh, the, the, the fact of the matter is, whether it's fourteen or fifteen or sixteen bucks a month, this is going up about a buck a month. If you can shove it in the can, they'll pretty much take it off your hands. And, uh, in, in terms of the complaints that I get, I get complaints occasionally, they miss my cul-de-sac, they miss my road. I pick up the phone, I call Waste Management, uh, the ref there, Alan Lane, does an excellent job, he says, I'll take care of it. Within twenty-four hours, it's picked up. So, I mean, they, they have a process in place. If you wanna go, if you want to call the HCUA number, you can press one and that takes you to, who do we have? Not Waste Pro, Waste Management.
Waste Management.
You hit two, it gives you Pelican.
Waste.
Waste. And you can report whatever it is. And my experience is they take care of it. So I think part of it is, if if your trash or garbage is not picked up on time, get on the phone, call them, let them know. And I I think, remember, they have chips in these garbage carts, verifying when the carts were put out there. Did you miss the pickup time? Or whether they just missed it entirely? So that's my observation. The point I'm trying to make is, I get some complaints. I follow up on them. The complaints disappear. I'm sure there may be folks who don't call me that that simmer, as we say in the South, over the fact that their garbage wasn't picked up. But if that's the case, call Alan Lane, get on your phone, let them know. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, did you have something?
I was just looking at the the garbage can as a, with one company. And Pelican Waste picks up the trash and that.
Yeah. Let me point out too, that that in the past, the previous contractor owned those cans. The Utility Authority owns these cans now. So, you know, we can, the cans will stay in place regardless of what, who has the next contract. So that's a a long-term kind of situation, too. So that was a benefit in a contract that was done two years ago regard to those folks. And it had the RFID and all the, you know, the mechanisms to supposedly track, you know, people stealing one one of those can and that sort of thing, so.
Who owns the landfill?
Waste Pro.
Waste Management.
Waste Management, yeah. Waste Pro, yeah.
They own the landfill, but that's not part of this contract?
No.
Waste Waste Pro is different from who we got?
Well, the the contractor has a place. You know, if there's a a public landfill at some point in time, which could be fifteen years from now, so those are the kinds of things that have been kicked around at that point. They're going to fill up at at some point in time. There, with regard to the the use of that landfill, you know, they specifically avoided anything coming from Louisiana, especially New Orleans area to there. So, I mean, the capacity to to meet the needs of Harrison County was a big part of the, you know, the negotiations and and the metrics of, you know, how we're going to deliver, you know, get the stuff out of the neighborhoods into a, you know, sanitary kind of landfill. But, you know, two big things I want to mention was the Utility Authority, Utility Authority owns those cans. That'll keep us from having to replace those cans, you know, with the next contractor. And that was, you know, a big part of that contract. We had fourteen thousand cans, and we grew about one-forty-three this year. Is that what?
Yeah, over a hundred.
I think a hundred and forty-three, yeah. Least would it be?
New addresses.
Yeah, yeah. But the overall budget, I think for Utility Authority, for the city of Biloxi, you know, is probably going to be about eleven point eight million. I think that's what our numbers are, coming up, was inclusive of that, right?
That's what we pay then, for water, sewer, trash, et cetera, et cetera.
That's right.
Well, if we are finished trash-talking each other, call for the question. All in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion fails for a majority. We'll move to ordinance C.
That's hysterical.
Ordinants amending the code of ordinance related to the water and sewer rates charge.
This was originally moved by George Lawrence and seconded by Kenny Glavine. Mr. Lawrence, discussion?
Mike, you can break this down on what we actually doing, how much you charging more for the water, and it's over a four-year period?
There is a paper at your place that that shows, for example, what we pay, what we will pay this next year for water compared to the other cities nearby. Gulfport pays eleven dollars and thirty cents for four thousand gallons of water. I use four thousand because it's sort of the the average, the bell curve. It's, that's where the most people are, between three and four thousand. So for four thousand gallons of water in Ocean Springs, you're going to pay eleven dollars and eighty-seven cents. In Gulfport, you'll pay eleven dollars and thirty cents. In Biloxi, if you pass this, you'll pay five dollars and eighty-three cents. That seven-fourth, that seven, that customer, that four-thousand-gallon customer will pay, who pays, who pays today, thirty-one dollars and ninety-one cents for water, water and sewer, will now pay thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents, an increase of thirty-five cents a month. The average customer will pay thirty-five cents a month or less for this increase. The reason we're increasing the rate is the same reason we increased the rate over the last four years, is to make our water sewer fund solvent, so that we can do projects. Prior to this, in the previous administrations, when the Water Sewer Fund was not collecting enough money to cover its costs, we borrowed money, and we're paying dearly for that. We're paying seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year in in loans to the state of Mississippi for for water sewer loans over time. And we'll be paying for that for many, many months and many years to go. We shouldn't have to, and we 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 should not. And we've stated in our audits in past years that we will raise rates appropriately so that we can cover the cost of operating, maintaining, and repairing our our infrastructure. And and in the paper I talk about, it reminds you what that infrastructure entails. Eleven ground and elevated tanks, twenty-three wells, two-hundred-and-seventy-two miles of pipe, two-hundred-and-ten miles of gravity sewer, and fifty-four miles of forced main sewer. It's a huge investment. In fact, it's priced at two-hundred-and-seventy-four million dollars. That's that asset that we're talking about maintaining. Two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars is what our, all of our assets add up to. The the water line break that that we've, that we had just this last week here on Main Street is an example, a very good and unfortunately, common example of how we've let our infrastructure get to the point of a breakdown maintenance. We're now fixing pipes when they break instead of fixing them before they break. What we've done in the last four years, thanks to this council and the previous council proving, doing a three percent increase per year, we now actually end the year with a fund balance that's allowed us to do projects. And I listed those projects in the paper. Many of them are in Wool Market, where you also see in the attachments to that paper that there's still large swaths of area in Wool Market that we have not in twenty-one, did he, did he, did the gentleman tell us twenty-one years? In twenty-one years, that we still haven't provided water and sewer to many parts of our city. And that's, that's part of the projects that we've got teed up for this next year. It's, you know, it's incredibly important for us to charge for our our water and sewer a fair rate that allows us to take care of that system. Otherwise, we fall back into breakdown maintenance and borrowing money to to fix it. You see the projects listed on the paper. Cleaning and repairing the the tanks, cleaning and and putting online the new Coon Street, the old Coon Street tank, the Lorraine Road and John Lee Road, new water line that's about to start, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars. So you see there are well over two million dollars in projects that we've just finished are doing right now with the fund balance from the Water Sewer Fund. This is what work that had to be done, that would, we would have had to borrow that money. Instead, we're paying as we go. Assuming that that fund stays solvent with a very small two percent increase, we'll do the extension of the Lorraine Road water line for a half a million dollars. We'll do a new water well in West Biloxi, where we're down to one water well. And 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 we have, you know, pressure, pressure issues because that one water, the water well at Bay Vista died about five or six years ago. And so there's, I mean, that Bay Vista tank that's bored for, that that tank doesn't have a well anymore. They they have to get the water from, over in Bay Vista from another well. So we're, we're going to have, start having water, water issues if if we lose another well. So there, there's a new well on the list for 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 West Biloxi. There's a, there's a project to extend the water line up down Lorraine Road to Shorecrest. There's, there's a project for continued cleaning, repairing, and painting of of the elevated water tanks. These are all things that a city is supposed to be doing. But we can't do it if we don't have a utility fund, Water Sewer Fund that's solvent. We can't borrow our way to repairing our infrastructure. There's too much of it. So what we're asking you to do is to prove a minimal two percent increase per year over the next four years. That's what the ordinance says. And as I pointed out earlier, that would cost the average customer thirty-five cents a month for the cheapest water on the Gulf Coast.
Mr. Lawrence?
That's all.
Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, unlike the previous ordinance, I can support this. It's an enterprise fund. You listed well, you listed it well on what it's going for and the improvements, and that's what our citizens want. Every penny that goes into the enterprise fund will be spent for improvements on our sewer and water systems. And that's just good business. So you got my support. That's all I got.
So this doesn't affect the HCUA fee at all, correct? So so basically, this is only an increase on the people between three thousand and five thousand usage?
As the mayor was, no, it's an increase on everybody, including the casinos. I just used the four thousand one as an example.
That's the normal usage, somewhere between three and five thousand, somewhere. That's what the majority of people use.
The people under three thousand gallons are going to pay four, four or five cents more per
Okay.
per month on their flat rate. Now, we do, we do use some of this money to pay for water and sewer that that we buy. Remember, we, we pay the utility authority to manage and operate our utility plants, our our sewer plants. So part of the eleven thousand dollars the mayor mentioned that we have to pay annually to HCUA is to pay them for water that we, in some cases, have to buy from them. And then also to pay for the people that manage our sewer plants.
And do you have a ballpark number of what the total additional revenue this will generate next fiscal year?
I can't answer that, but I can, it's not a hard number to figure out.
Okay.
Because the problem is, it's a little complicated because every category of of customer is a different rate. So I've been giving you the the average, but the casinos, for example, this year, they they are paying a dollar seventy-five per per thousand gallons, and they were paying a dollar seventy. So they went up a nickel just the last year. So they're all a little bit different, but the rates are listed in the in the ordinance.
Okay, that's all.
Our Water Sewer Fund, that you'll see in the twenty-one budget, has an estimated revenue or collections of about seventeen million dollars.
Mike, does that include this increase or not in your budget?
That includes this increase. I've got that built into the budget today.
Okay.
Councilman Tisdale?
Keep in mind, we pay eleven, our our rate for the next year will be about twelve million a year to the Utility Authority. It's inclusive of debt service, which, you know, we've been paying down for for the last four or five years. Never before, they were just paying interest only. So it's, it's a big number. It's the biggest single budget item you've got, is what the, what we pay the Utility Authority, including about fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Any more discussion on the council? Call for the question. All in favor? Motion carries five-one.
Who was in opposition, please?
I was.
Okay.
If you, I'll discuss it with you afterwards, but it's the same discussion that we had at the beginning of this increase of water a couple of years ago, when we, when we decided to raise the water rate on tax favors because we were subsidizing it through the general fund, yet we didn't reduce the general fund collections to offset the increased cost on the, on the homeowners. But we'll talk about it more later if you want to. The move to resolution D, please.
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision replat for properties currently identified as fifteen thirty-five and fifteen thirty-nine Collin Street.
Motion.
Moved by Councilwoman Newman. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Nathan Barrett. Discussion, Ms. Newman?
Mr. Creel, enlighten us, please.
Sorry, Jerry.
About a year ago, Mr. Fern came to us with this property on Collin Street. It's on the south side. And the proposal at that time was to subdivide it and build two duplexes on it. There are some neighbors across the street that weren't crazy about the duplexes, but it was approved anyway. And as Mr. Fern went out to try to to market the idea of the duplexes, he couldn't generate any interest in it. So what he's doing now is coming back to re-subdivide the property into four individual lots. He's going to build four single-family houses on the property. And when it went to the planning commission, we had no opposition to it.
Thank you, Director Creel. Does that conclude your discussion? Councilperson Barrett?
No discussion.
Councilperson Tisdale?
I'm thinking Collin Street, does this run east and west? It's between St. Peter and Acacia in there? Okay. I I know where it's at. Thank you.
Discussion. Councilman Lawrence? Councilman Glavine?
Nope.
Call for the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. So it'll take us to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Paul Tisdale. Do I have a second? Second by Dixie Newman. Councilman Tisdale? Any items on the consent agenda you would care to discuss?
Just one on on item J. This, this is the Sherman Cannon repairs, amending the municipal budget, provide funding for said project. And and as I understand it, we're transferring money from project ten sixty-two, which was the old Highway Ninety Fishing Bridge lights. That was a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, I believe, is what was stated. And what's the source of that? What was the source of that funding for the, the?
County, County Port Village is the original.
Okay, gotcha. That's all. Thank you. That's all I have.
We can, the Fishing Bridge project came in under bid, and the bid came in, so we got some extra money that we didn't need for it.
That's all. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Councilwoman Newman?
Nothing.
Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah, I got a few of them here. I like the, on G, you know, we're going through all of it by increase and everything. The sweep, sweepers come out for the same price.
Same price.
Same price. That's pretty amazing.
Same, same, same amount of service, which is not as much as we'd like.
You know, we're always getting on everybody about everything, you know.
Only option we have is to buy a street sweeper, and right now, capital money is pretty tight. Better off than renting, renting it.
And on the, it's kind of, what you're doing is exactly what you're doing with H with the old keeps, it's a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Which item?
That's a H. You had twenty-five thousand for maintenance. You had sixty thousand or something for the lights. So has anything changed?
The total annual cost of the city under the agreement as amended is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, includes twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the same. The capital maintenance fund, forty-eight thousand dollars for the management fees, which is the same. Sixty thousand dollars for the city's portion of the electrical cost, which is the same. Those are the same costs that are in our budget for 2020.
So what happened? Did it ended and you extended it one more year?
Yes, exactly.
And we did this every year?
Renewal.
It's a, it's basically a restated and renewed contract, a management agreement. So that none of the, none of, none of the costs change. You saw that in the non, non-department budget. So all of those costs are shown in the non-department budget, and that they're just stated here in this resolution and this restated, restated contract. So, I mean, so it's either that or we start over. I mean, this is just taking the existing contract and adding another year onto it and stating out loud for everybody to hear how much, how much it's costing us. So so there's no change to this, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, just gives you to give them another year at the same deal.
Well, then this whole contract going change to twenty-one, if something doesn't have, doesn't revert back to the city?
I think it's twenty-three. I I think it's to twenty twenty-three, that the the current agreement, lease agreement says that they, we can buy the museum for one dollar. That's going to be an interesting one for the council to deal with.
Yeah, that's a different fish. That's a different one. Anyway, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure we're doing the exact same thing we've been doing all of them. And then going back to J, you took some of this money from the old Fishing Bridge. I thought we were going to relight that bridge. We did that and still have money left over?
We did that, still had money left over. The bids came in lower. And so as we typically do, we take, that's, that port, that port money, that Port Village money, has to be spent on projects that are port-related. So we have the Sherman Cannon repairs. We just were able to move the money into that other port project.
A hundred and twenty thousand. All right, on the, Dixie's got one she did on the, was that L? We had a request like that. And how, how's a Harris County help? Does it have their own law, law group, home but come in? Does it have their own law, motor crew, whole bunch come in? How do you come in to help us do ditches and cut grass and everything?
How do they do it?
Yeah, I mean, they got a whole crew that they bring in.
Happened in this specific case, and Councilwoman Newman knows the inside of this deal. We have a contract, and the contractor's mowing a whole series of lots all over the city, and the contractor was, with all the rain, was behind. And this one ditch was in pretty bad shape, really overgrown, and Ward Three was getting a lot of calls about it. And so, a call was made to a council, well, to Supervisor Martin, and she said, "We, our crew, our crew will take care of you. We can back you up on this one." So, so she agreed to do it so long as we were to officially request it, which is what we're doing. Actually, the work's already done, and they did a great job. As it turned out, our contractor was, was about to get there. He, he actually got there that morning to look at the job and was surprised to see the county working, so. And I stopped and talked to them, and they were, they were, they were happy, happy to do it for us. And I'm sure they, assuming we keep thanking them for requesting it officially, they'll, they'll do it again for us if we need it.
I think it's great that the county does that. You know, it really don't cost us anything. We just act, in a local agreement, and like Beverly Morton, and them on the councils, Supervisor Board step up. I think it's great that they do that for us. You know, you get in a jam and they come in and help. I like, I'd love to hear that. I think it's great. Another one, 5M, is it $500,000 on the bridge repair? Is that just estimated? And you'll be reimbursed, or somebody going to get sued?
It'll be reimbursed by insurance money. All right, we just, we, we know that there are going to be some costs, substantial costs to fix that bridge. We, we know the last time that somebody mowed into the, the pilings that it cost us a quarter million dollars just to fix the pilings. So, we, and we're, we're going out to bid for that, for that work now. We know we're going to have to put some money in upfront, so we've got port money that we could, that we could use, but, but we thought maybe we just pay ourselves back with the economic development security money and, and, and so we can always borrow from that source so long as there's a way to pay it back. And we obviously have a way to pay it back because we'll be an insurance claim.
Mr. Leonard, with regard to the Economic Development Security Fund, uh, do we know what timeframe? With regard to city claims, what timeframe do we usually get reimbursed by insurance proceeds?
I would, I would guess, and this is an educated guess, that we would be paid back sometime in fiscal year 2021, once we have finished the work and they know the full cost. We've got to get the work finished and have invoices to prove what it cost us.
All right, when we take this money out of the Economic Security Development Fund, do we intend to reimburse the Economic Development Security Fund with some form of rate of interest for return that we would lost by pulling it out?
Well, I think we pass that on in the settlement. Whatever it costs.
Well, if, if. Well, if we, if we move the funds out now and we don't get reimbursed for a year.
The funds out till we actually have to pay for it. So, I mean, you know, it's got to be, it's got to be engineered, so.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what we're paying.
So, with all due respect, what I mean is when we, at whatever point we move the funds out of the account, we no longer are accruing interest on that account.
Right.
Are we going to reimburse ourselves for the lost interest that we've spent? Is that going to be accounted for?
I think that would be part of my claim.
That's all I'm asking. If you're going to account, make sure we account for the lost revenues that we would get by not leaving the money in the account.
Right.
Councilman Lawrence?
Thanks, that's all for me. I leave anybody, anybody else? I miss anything?
I don't think you missed anything. Councilman Barrett?
Just for clarification on the Orokeef agreement, this is for fiscal year 21 and 22.
21, fiscal year 21.
It says for two renewals for the period of one year each.
That, that, that's the original agreement, right? The original agreement, a copy of which is attached here, too, allows for two renewals for a period of one year each.
Okay, so that's just renewing it for next year.
That one year has to be renewed again.
Okay.
There has to be a renewal. And it would just be a simple one-pager if, if there was no change.
Okay.
Just to change the, the years.
Councilman Glavine, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing further to add to George's complete and full execution of the consent agenda. There being no more discussion, I call for the question. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there anybody, is there anybody that is in opposition to any of the items on the consent agenda? I'd like the record to reflect that I am in opposition to A. Do I have a motion on the routine agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion by Paul Tisdale. Do I have a second? Second by Nathan Barrett. Mr. Tisdale, you have the floor.
Not a zip zilch.
Councilman Barrett? Councilman Glavine?
Nope.
Councilman, Councilwoman Newman? Councilman George Lawrence?
All right. Wake up back there. Come on, Walter Roddick, come up here and give us some good news. You've been sleeping back there. I know you've been resting.
Oh, sure. I'm picking up on my team out there. We received $712,000 on Monday. We were in good shape.
That's what you want to hear.
Anything, anything in the, down the pipe, anything coming that we know of?
Next case.
All right. Do I have a motion to recess?
I moved.
Got a motion by George Lawrence, second by Paul Tisdale. All in favor? Motion carries unanimous. We are in recess.